Council is now in session, please stand for the Pledge of Legions. Carmen will call.
Markovich.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Calwinski. Yulacki.
Here.
Hig.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Inahosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Moving on to reading minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Vitale.
Take a motion to accept the minutes from the April twenty eighth, two thousand and fourteen meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Vitale, second by Councilman Emerson. Minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And accepted. Approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move through our approval of claims, April twenty third to May seventh, two thousand and fourteen, for council meeting, May twelfth, two thousand and fourteen. Beginnings with claims dated April twenty ninth and ending with claims dated May seventh. Claim number two four one zero through claim number two seven zero four, for a total of one million, eight hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Vitale, to accept the claims. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I have one claim for an addition, claim number two seven zero five, to the Indiana Department of Transportation, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-three cents. And that's for a contract, and it's going to be road rehab from US forty-one to Shrog Avenue. ISO move.
Second.
Amended by Councilman Markovich, motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Vitale, to amend the claims. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the amended claims? Carmen will call vote on the amended claims.
Markovich.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Yulacki.
Yes.
Hig.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Inahosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Amended claims passed, eight zero, one absent. Now the claims as written. Any discussion? Carmen will call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Yulacki.
Yes.
Hig.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yep.
Inahosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims passed, eight zero, one absent. Moving on to public hearing. There is none. Going on to communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I received the correspondence on March thirteen, two thousand and thirteen. Uh, it's in regard to WKB, developer Woodmar Project, Ruth and Riley Construction Incorporated versus Woodmar Hammond LLC, et cetera, Ruth and Riley Construction LLC, BB Peneer, Common Holdings LLC, et cetera, cause number forty-five DO four thirteen oh two PL zero zero two seven. Please allow this correspondent to serve as a response to the March eleventh, two thousand and fourteen correspondence to Mr. Talley with regards to above referenced matter. As you and many may not be aware, there are currently two lawsuits pending regarding the Woodmar Project. All the lawsuits involved and alleged failure to pay subcontractors for the mortgage holders on the property, subcontractors have failed a foreclosure on their mechanic's lien, and the bank has filed a foreclosure of the, of its mortgage. Estimated liability for the developer in these cases is approximately four million dollars. The Hammond Redevelopment Commission has named as a defendant in both above referenced cases to answer as any interest it may have in the Woodmar Mall real estate. The Development Commission was named as the defendant. The Hammond Redevelopment Commission initiated legal action against the developer to recover four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, incentives which was previously paid to the developer at the first payment under the development agreement. Developer has countersued the Hammond Redevelopment Commission and request that the Hammond Redevelopment Commission be required to pay the balance of the incentive owed under the development agreement. At this point, we are looking through the discovery process of the litigation. The above is a brief outline of the Woodmar Project that was requested. It would like to discuss the litigation in more detail. I will be happy to create an executive session called for that purpose. It should have any, if you should have any questions regarding the matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. David W. Westland, ESQ, email D. Westland, A. WKO Law, dash comma.
All right, I also received a letter from Indiana Department of Transportation. Dear Mr. Opinker, thank you for your letter requesting a more permanent fix to the potholes on Indianapolis Boulevard, State Road one fifty-two on US twelve twenty and Calumet Avenue, US forty-one. During the winter, NDOT uses cold mix, which is a mixture of small stone and liquid asphalt, as a temporary patch. Even after being filled with coal patch, the same potholes require ongoing maintenance and can reopen several times throughout the winter. The asphalt plants reopen this week, and our highway maintenance department will be making a more permanent repair to the potholes on Indianapolis Boulevard and Calumet Avenue with the hot mixed asphalt within the next two weeks, weather and scheduling permitting. As we stated before in our previous letter, NDOT assessment team travels, evaluates all fifty-six hundred miles of state highways in northwest Indiana on a regular basis, and prioritizes the condition of all roads in those thirteen counties for projects. Several projects are either underway or planned in these stretches of road. As you are aware, NDOT completed an eighteen million dollar project replacing the nine-span bridge on Indianapolis Boulevard in December. There is a two-point-seven million dollar project currently underway on Indianapolis Boulevard between one hundred and sixty-fifth and one hundred and sixty-ninth streets. This summer, a project will rehabilitate and pavement on Indianapolis Boulevard between Shrog and Calumet Avenue. Projects are planned to resurface Calumet Avenue from healing north to US Route twelve in two thousand and sixteen, and there are also plans in the next few years to resurface Indianapolis Boulevard from one hundred and sixty-fifth to US Route twenty. NDOT has spent more than four hundred and fifty million dollars in Lake County alone since two thousand and six. As we see by projects listed above, there are tens of millions of dollars in projects either underway or planned in the coming years. We continue to assess the needs of the city of Hammond and all thirteen counties in northwest Indiana, and will be adding additional projects in the coming years based on those assessments. Sincerely, Bob Alderman, District Deputy Commissioner.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Want to read the editorial, it says the Supreme Court says prayer at meetings are constitutional. City Council in Hammond has halted the practice. The Hammond City Council likely will again debate the merits of opening the session with prayer, and sharply divided US Supreme Court ruled Monday that the prayer of local government is constitutional permissible, even in the prayers regular favor, one run religion over other. Council President Michael Pinker last year halted prayer at the meeting on the meeting governing board following a discussion of the Second US Circuit Court of Appeals that founded Christian prayer at meetings in Greece Newark Town Council suggested an official affiliation with the particular religion in violation with the United States Constitution, ban of establishing a state religion. In a four-to-five vote decision that favored two concerning opinions and two dissents, separate courts overturned the ruling and affirmed the practice as constitutes with American tradition and not conceived to nonbelievers. Those commensurable prayers strive for the idea that people of many faiths may be united in a community of tolerance and devotion, wrote Justice Anthony Kennedy of the High Court. Even those who agree as the religion doctrine may find common ground in the desire to show respect to divide in all respects of their lives and being. Justice Ellen Hingin of her dissent said, said individuals should not be forced to send through prayers to God that might not recognize simply the practice of public life. When the citizens of the country approach the government to do so only as Americans, not as the members of the faith of another and the means of even in a particular legislative body, they should not confront government-sponsored worship and divides along religious lines, she said. A Pinker Fifth District did not return phone calls and messages seeking comments in court decisions. Hammond Councilman Anthony Hig said he wants prayer back on the agenda as quickly as possible. I feel that I need God in every aspect of my life, and it is important that you give him the praise and glory, said that he can give you direction in making decisions, Hig said. Hammond Mayor Thomas McDermott, an attorney who represents the prayer ban to uphold, said he was shocked by the ruling and looks forward to seeing how the city council responds. The Democratic mayor said he wants pressure council members for our against prayer, but believes it would be a big mistake if the council resumes prayer ignores the diversity of beliefs among Hammond residents. I am never offended, I'm never offended when a Christian prayer is done because I'm a Christian, but we do have people that practice Muslim religions in the city of Hammond. We do not, we do not have people that practice Jewish faith, McDermott said. Whether or not they are offended, I guess the Supreme Court doesn't care. Indiana Attorney General Greg Zoller, a Republican who acts as Supreme Court on behalf of the twenty-one states to preserve prayer, said he was glad the justices recognized the rule of prayer in public life. We contend elected officials ought not to be placed in a position of having to screen prayers, sectionary references, and we have, we are pleased that the United States Supreme Court has, has in part agreed with the uncovered varieties of the honorable tradition of the representation of democracy, Zoller said. In saying all this, I mean, I've been a councilman for ten years, even before I became a councilman, prayer has always been a practice before we started. And a number of things are going on in this world, and what we all need is prayer. And it's very important that that is a part of this meeting while we make the decisions that affect all the citizens of this great city. And the next council meeting, it will be put on the agenda, and you guys can make a decision as to whether or not you want to or you don't. But in, in my eyesight, I feel God is first and foremost, and I can do nothing without God, bottom line.
Mr. President.
Councilman Inahosa.
I have a letter here from the Hammond City Controller's Office concerning the, the two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirteen Festival of the Lakes finance reports and how police officers were paid. It says here, Michael Pinker, President, and all the council members, concerning the finance report and police officers' pay response. Dear Ham, dear Council President Opinker, the city of Hammond Controller's Office does not contain the information you are requesting. We do not have the overall finance reports of the Festival of the Lakes for two thousand and eleven to two thousand and thirteen. Our police officers who protected the citizens of Hammond and surrounding communities, along with all council members who were in attendance at the Festival of the Lakes, were paid with Henry units money, which various council members have contributed, uh, to, to, from their own gaming funds.
Any other communications? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
President.
Councilman Vitale.
Finance Committee is bringing out fourteen thirteen this evening.
Any other committee reports?
Counselors, uh, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Counselors, the whole will be bringing out fourteen fourteen and fourteen sixteen.
No, we're not bringing out fourteen sixteen, just fourteen fourteen.
Sorry.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Ordinances, third and final passage.
Fourteen thirteen, ordinance of the Hammond Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, authorizing the city to issue its taxable economic development revenue bonds, series two thousand and fourteen, gateway area projects, and improving other actions in respect thereto.
Mr. President.
Councilman Vitale.
Move for final passage of fourteen thirteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Vitale, second by Councilman Emerson, and final passage of fourteen thirteen, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I would like to replace fourteen thirteen with fourteen thirteen A in its entirety.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vines to amend fourteen thirteen, second by Councilman Inahosa, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Fourteen thirteen A is essentially the same, uh, with the exception of the correction of some errors that were on the original, uh, ordinance.
Any other discussion? Carmen will call vote on thirteen, or fourteen, fourteen dash thirteen A.
Markovich.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Yulacki.
Yes.
Hig.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Inahosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Fourteen thirteen A passes, eight zero, one absent. Now fourteen thirteen is written.
Markovich.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Yulacki.
Yes.
Hig.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Inahosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Fourteen thirteen passes, eight zero, one absent.
Fourteen fourteen, an ordinance amending ordinance number eighty-seven fifty-four and eighty-seven fifty-five, an ordinance of the city of Hammond, creating and now extending the College Bound Scholarship Program.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of fourteen fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vines for final passage of fourteen fourteen, second by Councilman Vitale, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, this will extend the College Bound, College Bound Program through the school year of two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-six. Um, uh, there was some discussion in caucus, uh, this evening about the attachment, uh, with regard to the College Bound Renewal Program. The, um, uh, community service hours that the students will be required, uh, to perform will be forty hours. They will be required to perform those forty hours of community service before December thirty-first of their freshman year. Um, this will give more community service to, uh, the city of Hammond and for its citizens.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I think, uh, in caucus, the mayor said the funding is going to come through the water department. Can someone give me a clear indication of how that's going to work?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
That is correct, however, uh, the, uh, funding will come from the proceeds of the, uh, Illinois water billing, not the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
So I guess my question would be, if they're going to pay for it, so we're not going to be responsible, so we're not at some point going to be requested to contribute any casino dollars, it's going to be totally funded from Illinois?
That is my understanding, yes.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Vitale.
I'd like to be added to that ordinance.
All right, want any Councilman Vitale add ordinance? Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I just would like to point out that, uh, this is such a fabulous program, uh, for our homeowners and their children, and, uh, it gives so many more children in the city of Hammond the opportunity to get a college education and, uh, a more educated, uh, group of residents that we have. Um, I think we can look for, uh, greater things in the future from our residents, so thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I guess my question would be, how many of those students are coming back and returning to Hammond? I mean, true enough, the program, and initially I voted in favor of it, but, you know, again, my question was, and I posed it to the mayor, we've met on, uh, several occasions in regards to how long are we going to have to fund the program? It's a great incentive to try to attract people, more people to Hammond. I think economic development is a great tool to attract more businesses to Hammond. But at the end of the day, uh, you know, we're funding, uh, college tuition for students, and what are we getting in return? Are they coming back to Hammond and contributing? You know, I understand they work in the summer here, but how many am I actually returning back to Hammond and really making a difference in our city? And I would like to see the stats of that. Since this program has been implemented, how many students have actually returned back to Hammond and found jobs and are doing something really, um, to enhance our city? That's the only question I have. Wonderful program.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Um, I do attend the Redevelopment Commission meetings on a regular basis. I see how many young people are taking advantage of our homebound program. A lot of those young people who are taking advantage of that program and buying homes here in the city of Hammond are college graduates. We have one of them sitting in our audience tonight who works for the city. Um, I just, uh, I real, I feel very strongly that we need to give our children an opportunity to get the education, to come back to the city that they grew up in, and maybe economically develop some areas in their neighborhoods or other parts of the city. Um, I, I just see such good things coming from the children who are recipients of this, uh, scholarship program, and, um, uh, and I just think that there will be great things coming from those graduates.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Again, my question, and for some reason or another, I don't know why, the question always seems to go around, the only question that I posed was, how many of those students are coming back and returning? Certainly if there's incentive, and I can afford to buy a home in Hammond, and they're going to say, hey, and I got kids, and I can purchase a home, and my kids are going to get a four-year ride, yeah, why not move to Hammond? My job's local, true enough. I want to know how many of those students are coming back to Hammond and making a contribution to our city? Simple question. Is it one? Is it five? Is it ten? Or is it twenty? Who knows? Maybe someone can find that out for me, and the question can be answered, but I don't have an answer for that question, so that's why I posed the question. And God forbid, it, probably if I didn't make that request, it would probably never be brought up, but I'm just interested to know how many students actually, once they finish college, how many of them come back and move here? And live here?
Excuse me.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, we do happen to have in the audience this evening, Leanne Munoz, uh, who is the College Bound Coordinator. Um, Leanne, would you like to say a few words with regard to Councilman Hig's question?
Yes, um, we actually did a survey of the students from two thousand and six to two thousand and nine. We sent out about a hundred and thirty surveys, and we received, I want to say, fifty-four to sixty back, and I believe the percentage of that was about fifty-four percent of students who have come back to live in the city of Hammond. We also did the Faces of College Bound, which is a video you can show, you can see on collegebound.gohammond.com, and that shows the overwhelming majority, I think all ten, maybe fifteen, all fifteen, had purchased a home in Hammond or are currently working in the city of Hammond. So we do have, um, a lot of students that, yes, are coming back to the city of Hammond, and we actually received even more surveys after the deadline had passed, but we haven't calculated that back into the future, into the figure. Um, also, all of the information that you had just requested is in the yearly document, which was sent to all council people in December, so that information is available to you.
Thank you, Leanne.
You're welcome.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I think this program from its inception was a win-win for Hammond. Um, people buy a home, and their, their children's college tuition is, is paid for. I, my only regret is being a parent of two college graduates and then some, and a homeowner in Hammond, that I didn't have an opportunity to use the program. So I hope it, it stays around for a long time, and a housing market that nationwide is ridiculous, we found a way, uh, to improve our situation in, in housing in Hammond and help educate, uh, our students. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Just so that it's clear to you, let me make it perfectly clear so that there's no misconception of where we at. Nothing wrong with the program. My question has always been, how long are we going to fund it? Okay, now we have a funding mechanism that's supposedly going to fund it. Now, my other question was, and I think she kind of clarified to some, some degree of what I was requesting, is to how many students are actually coming back to the city and contributing? Simple. No one said the program was bad, no one said they hated the program, just a simple question, how many of the students are actually coming back that have benefited from the program?
Any other discussion? Carmen will call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Vitale.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Calwinski. Yulacki.
Yes.
Hig.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Inahosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Ordinance fourteen fourteen passes, eight zero, one absent.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
In, in regard to Councilman Emerson's, uh, comment, um, talk to your wife, if you have some more kids, they can take advantage of the program then.
Moving on to introduction of ordinances.
Fourteen seventeen, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city as economic revitalization areas for purposes of real property tax abatement at thirty-five twenty Calumet Avenue.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading, um, and placing counsel as a whole with a public hearing on six nine.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vines for first and second, second by Councilman Vitale, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Fourteen nineteen, an ordinance creating a new section of chapter one twenty-one to require motor vehicle repossession agents who operate in Hammond to have a city of Hammond's license and follow approved procedure.
Mr. President.
Council.
For first reading of fourteen nineteen, and counsel as a whole.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vines for first and second, second by Councilman Vitale, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes. That ends the introduction of ordinances, moving on to resolutions. First one I'll be coming out of before.
Fourteen R fifteen, Hammond Common Council preliminary economic revivaria resolution for thirty-five twenty Calumet Avenue.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanaz.
I move for adoption of fourteen R dash fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Vanaz, second by Councilman Spitali for adoption. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanaz.
This is again regarding the thirty-five twenty Calumet Avenue property establishing an economic revitalization area.
Any other discussion? Carmen will call vote on fourteen R fifteen.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanaz.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yulacki.
Yes.
Hid.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henehosa. Opinker.
Yes, fourteen R fifteen passes eight zero one absent.
Fourteen R fourteen, Hammond Common Council confirmatory economic revitalization area resolution for thirty-five twenty Calumet Avenue.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanaz.
Um, I move for approval of fourteen R dash fourteen with a, excuse me, with a public hearing on six nine.
Second.
It's motion by Councilwoman Vanaz for first and second, and second by Councilman Henehosa in a public hearing on six nine for fourteen R fourteen. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Carmen will call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanaz.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yulacki.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henehosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, fourteen R fourteen passes eight zero one absent.
Fourteen R sixteen, a resolution confirming the appointment of Carrie Hutton as the Commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move that we, this resolution for fourteen R sixteen, I so.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henehosa. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
For clarity, there are some prerequisites for individuals that sit on this particular board, human relations, and one of the criteria is they need a teacher and a lawyer, and so she fits in that category.
Any other discussion?
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanaz.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yulacki.
Yes.
Hid.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henehosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, fourteen R sixteen passes eight zero one absent.
Fourteen R seventeen, a resolution confirming the appointment of Kristen Hill as the Commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission of the city of Hammond, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I move that we pass fourteen R dash seventeen.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spitali for passage of fourteen R seventeen. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Uh, Ms. Hill was in the caucus, and I would like to just add that this position came open because of our new controller being, you know, on the, that was on the Commissioner of the Hammond Human Relations Commission, thus opening this appointment. I feel she is very qualified, and as she had any questions, the caucus would have been answered. She has accomplished the tourney and has a lot of experience in the courts, a magistrate, and I think she's exactly what we want. I agree with the appointment.
Any other discussion? Carmen will call vote on fourteen R seventeen.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanaz.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Yulacki.
Yes.
Hid.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henehosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes, fourteen R seventeen passes eight zero one absent. That concludes our resolutions, moving on to new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I, um, too, like Councilman Henehosa, received a number of phone calls in regards to the flooding situation last night. I guess my question would be as to, you know, in the future, if we can have some kind of mechanism in place so that I'm not having to make several phone calls and I can just make one phone call to my constituents, one central location to go. Now, I do know that Frank Marvane's offices is offering buckets, bleachers, and mops, but certainly if we would have some kind of information available through the city, it would be greatly appreciated. I'm just requesting that a letter be sent to the mayor's office and see if we can have, in these type of incidents, when things occur in our city, that we have some kind of mechanism in place so that we can facilitate our approach to the situation in a way that it's not so complex versus having to tell my constituents, I'll call you back, that we just know that, you know, this is the action plan and this is what's going to take place. It makes it much more easier and simpler. So I'm just requesting that a letter be sent to the mayor in regards to the flooding issues. I so move.
Second.
It's motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henehosa to send the mayor a letter in regard to the flooding issues. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Uh, 'cause our next regularly scheduled meeting is May twenty-sixth, Monday, and also Memorial Day, I would like to make a motion that our next meeting, barring any unforeseen circumstances, would be June ninth, the next regularly scheduled meeting. I so move.
It's a motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spitali, with Memorial Day being a holiday, cancel that meeting, and the next meeting will be on six nine, or June sixth of fourteen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henehosa.
Yeah, I'd like to move for an intent to consider for fourteen dash fifteen for June ninth, twenty fourteen.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Henehosa, second by Councilman Higgs for an intent to consider on ordinance, what was that, fourteen fifteen?
Fourteen fifteen.
Fourteen fifteen. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Intent to consider for fourteen fifteen. Councilman Henehosa, second by Councilman Higgs. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henehosa.
Yeah, earlier I read the letter from the Controller's Office on the Festival of the Lakes that they don't, I guess they don't hold the finance reports from what they say for the Festival of the Lakes for twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, and did find out that the police officers were paid, and they do an outstanding job. I don't care if they get paid time and a half or whatever agreement they have, they deserve every bit of it, but I'm going to have to send a third notice and a final notice, and this one was for Pat Moore, because I guess the Festival of the Lakes police officers were paid through the Henry units, and the Henry units are so we can have police officers out in the streets. And I don't know what the law is, but in my opinion, that festival is supposed to make money, and the money that it makes, it pays for the police officers, that's supposed to be one of the expenses. And if it didn't make any money, then more money has to come from the mayor's gaming to pay for these police officers, so we have adequate Henry units on the streets. And I'm hearing a little bit about maybe only one Henry unit, maybe Sunday and Monday, when usually during the week, especially on the weekend, we have a couple Henry units out there per shift. So therefore, I'd like to send four letters again, or three. The first one is to, and they're going to be for the clerk's office, they're going to be the same, except I'd like to put on a third notice. This one is for Pat Moore, the administrator. Move to have a letter sent to requesting copies of the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen Festival of the Lakes overall finance reports, including how police officers paid, was paid by the city or by wins and losses. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Henehosa, second by Councilman Markovich to send these three entities a letter in regards to Festival of the Lakes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That was, Mr. President, that was for Pat Moore. The next one is for Chief John Doherty, also third notice. Move to have a letter sent on how twenty-eleven and twenty-thirteen police officers were paid or by the budget, or were they reimbursed by wins and losses from the Festival of the Lakes? At what rate did they get paid? A flat rate or was it time and a half? And again, third notice. I so move.
Didn't we do that on the last one? All three different entities?
First one was.
I was just setting them all together.
Exactly, just do them all together like.
Okay, that's the second one, and then the.
So you got Pat Moore Senior, you got Chief Doherty, and who's the third?
The third one is for Bobby Lindy, or replacement, that we just found out who the replacement is, and it's going to read the same, third notice. I so move.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
You know, if that whole area is under that RDA project, maybe you should send a letter to the Port Authority, maybe they might have some information on it.
Okay, if we can, in the one for Pat Moore, if we can include that also to the Port Authority.
Yes, so I have the Pat, a letter to the Port Authority also.
I so move. Second.
All those in favor? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
In caucus, I had brought out some economic development concerns, and I want to send a letter to redevelopment and economic development in the mayor's office in regards to the property on Columbia Avenue that's been vacant for a number of years, and see if we can get a environmental grant to get it cleaned up, as well as if we can try to attract some new businesses in the KFC building. And if the Burger King building is not going to be developed, why is people staying there on a regular basis? We need to either find out what they're going to move forward or what's going on with the building. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henehosa to send a letter on planning and development in regards to Columbia Avenue businesses that are boarded up as far as getting possible grants for.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
For clarity, the, on Columbia Avenue, it's a vacant lot that's been vacant for a number of years that needs to be cleaned. You can't build on the property until you clean it. And the other properties are on Calumet Avenue, the KFC building, and the Burger King building.
All right, we got a first and second. Did you get that, Joanne? All those in favor?
Mr. President, what are the addresses of those properties, Councilman Higgs?
Fifty-eight hundred block of Calumet Avenue.
Thank you, Councilman Mark.
But what about the one that needs to be environmentally cleaned?
All right, you're a councilwoman, a large councilwoman, Vanaz, if you ride down Columbia Avenue, it's been vacant since it sits behind it, it's been vacant for a number of years. I'm sure you're aware of it.
I'm certainly aware of it.
You and Ms. Hubbard are over there all the time.
As a matter of fact, I've had a conversation with Africa Tarver about that property. When we found out that the RDA was going to give grants to help remediate some brown fields, I inquired about that property. That property is owned by redevelopment. Excuse me. It is currently for sale. That property does have some environmental issues, but they're not critical. Something can be built on that property as long as there is not a basement. I've looked into this because I was curious why Kenny's ribs from years ago didn't go there and why the property is still vacant. It is for sale. It is being marketed, and that's what I know about it.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
My request was to send a letter to those department heads. I know it's vacant, and I know it's environmental issues on the property, because I was born and raised in the area. So in saying all that, it needs to be cleaned, and it's been on sale for a number of years. Just like you attract other businesses to other parts of the city, why not try to concentrate on the third district? That's my quest.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanaz.
As I do at every council meeting, I'd like to read a list of upcoming crime watches. It will be a little bit lengthy, being that we are not going to meet for a couple of weeks, but for those of you who are interested in knowing in what's going on in your neighborhood and you'd like to do good in your community, the first meeting coming up is tomorrow, Wednesday, May, I'm sorry, Wednesday, May fourteenth, the Woodmark Crime Watch at the National Guard Armory on one hundred and seventy-third. Thursday, May fifteenth, is the Hessville Crime Watch, seven p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Also on Thursday, May fifteenth, the South Hammond Crime Watch, that is at seven p.m. at the Hammond Housing Authority Building. On Monday, May nineteenth, at Columbia School, that is at six p.m. It's the Columbia Crime Watch. On Tuesday, May twentieth, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch meets at six thirty at the Ophelia Steen Center. On Wednesday, May twenty-first, the Lafayette Neighborhood Watch meets at Lafayette School, that is at six p.m. On Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet six thirty p.m. at the American Legion on Gosling. On Wednesday, May twenty-eighth, the Jefferson Crime Watch will meet at Jefferson School, that's at six thirty p.m. On Wednesday, May fourth, Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet at five p.m. at the American Legion on Holman, or I'm sorry, the VFW on Holman Avenue. And also on Wednesday, May, April, June fourth, six thirty p.m., Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School. On Friday, June sixth, nine fifteen in the morning, Irving Community Watch will meet at Irving School. I invite everyone to come out to the crime watch meetings. You find out a lot of information about what's going on in your neighborhood, and more specifically in your community, and that is how change happens. One person, one gesture, one moment at a time. Thank you.
Any other new and finished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Would just like to remind, the reason, you know, we're not here is Memorial Day, the Hammond Mohawks Parade will be stepping off at ten a.m., five, May twenty-sixth, at the Cavalier Inn, and take the kids out and watch the parade. Thank you.
Any other new and finished business? New and finished business is now closed. Public expression for speaker of the night will be Mr. George Stoya.
Just a quick inquiry. We passed an ordinance, find us that correctly, concerning the repo men, and Attorney Berger last time brought up an interesting issue with respect to a case he cited that kind of basically said that you didn't really need a permit, and was that resolved, or did you guys just, just, you know, I mean, I came late to the discussion, is, can anybody clarify that? Thanks.
Final speaker of the evening will be Mr. Alvin Cheeks.
Alvin Cheeks, eight thirty-two Merrill Street. I'm going to use my former address, eleven oh one Indianapolis Boulevard. That's an address that simply today that the city of Hammond closed a deal with Clayton Potter today. city of Hammond closed a, a deal with, uh, Clayton Potter today and, uh, casino gambling became legal. So in Clay's honor, I got together with Don King and some other holders to erect a plaque in North Hammond. So I want you guys, to invite you guys to contribute something that you'd like to see on the plaque, and we're picking a large, um, tract of land to develop in the city of Hammond in Clay's honor. And, uh, I was blessed with Don King asking me to do this, so it's gonna be a lot of fun and I really want you guys to participate. If you have a tract of land that you really like, I could, the, the one on Columbia Avenue, um, is overpriced, that's, I, I could tell you that point blank, that's why it's not selling. But, uh, if you have a really good tract of land that you like to see, we do have some in North Hammond that we own already. And, uh, also on that day today, the, uh, Lake George property was, uh, closed out. So it was two great days, two great home runs in the history of Hammond, so I just wanted to do that, keep Clay's name alive and keep what we do in North Hammond alive and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeks. I now have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Hinahosa, second by Councilman Spitali, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Meeting adjourned.